What they do is they agree on a new, the first thing that goes on the ballot is they agree on a new tax rate. A tax rate set that's going to bring the two of them together. That was the first thing on the ballot. Once you do that, then they would have elections for your school board that would represent both. And they would select a new superintendent. They would say hundreds of thousands.
Yes, yes.
Actually, you should be in.
It was really, I mean, we looked at everything. Education came in.
Why don't you guys do the pictures?
Well, we'll do, well, let's do that.
I think a lot of people on the committee were, Chip Johnson and.
Chief can take a picture?
And Carrie worked with us.
I don't know, can you take pictures of everybody? They'll look like mug shots, though. That'll be the problem.
You lie on the ground and put it down.
That was good.
So, yeah, so it's all here and.
What movie was there where they did all the Egyptian, what movie, what comedy was that?
Oh, I figured it was naked gun. Naked gun.
It was naked gun, you're right, that's exactly what it was.
How about sketch? You could sketch it?
Yeah.
I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under government, and with all, with liberty and justice for
Roll please. Clistic.
Here.
Marquez.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Marquez, I'm sorry, Kenny.
Here.
Six present.
MacIver.
I'm sorry. We haven't seen you much, I guess.
Wait, I'm here. Hey. I'm here anyway.
Sorry about that. Okay. We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and general nature. It's so strange not to have an audience. We've had so many audiences lately, now we have one person. Yeah, one person.
Welcome, Charles.
Okay. I'm glad you're here. If there's nothing to be, to question, comment, or announce, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of February 20th. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman McKenny, second by Alderman Shower. Any additions or deletions? In the roll, please. Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Marquez.
Aye.
MacIver.
Abstain.
Okay, would the abstentions go with the ayes? So that would be six. The minutes have been approved. Let's go to receiving of communications. Do any of the Alderman communications this year? Alderman, Clistic?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I received some communications and comments from parents at Mark Dela and a few neighbors with regards to, just in general, school safety. Their questions are what processes, what procedures, what things our police department does to keep our students safe. I believe Mayor mentioned one thing, we keep all our doors locked. Just like to quickly maybe review next police report that we have. If Chief Thomas, you could review that. Just processes, procedures, and also just touch a little bit about the security officer that we have full-time at Hinsdale South. So just to reassure the public that we do everything that is possible, that we can do to keep our kids safe.
Certainly. You know, I think one thing that we do a disservice to our youth and our families when these things happen, and we don't put it into perspective. I think there's about fifty-four million kids going to school each day. There's a hundred and sixty days of school. And even by biggest estimates, which are faulty than themselves, some people report up to eighteen school-involved shootings, so, this year, this school year. But the problem with that is that a shooting on a school bus, or shooting at a school bus, or shooting in a school parking lot, there's a lot of different things that account. So, in reality, there's probably been two, one in Benton, Kentucky, which actually I was, I drove past that school the day before the shooting, coming back from Kentucky. And then the one recently in Parkland. So in reality, it is, the percentage or the frequently occurrence in safety in school is very, very, very high. But we've been talking about it for such a long time, for a number of different reasons. We give a very bad perspective of what really is out there. So, kids going to school are very safe. Talking about Darien in particular, you mentioned the SRO in the school. Talk about Parkland and failure to engage. Know the officer at the school, and I'll guarantee that he engages when necessary. And we talk about incident command and how that process works. Also in Parkland, you heard about the commander giving a stand-down order, or not-to-enter order, or set a perimeter order. That's pre-Columbine stuff that should never have happened. Again, the officers are trained to go in, not wait for a SWAT unit or some type of specialized response unit, but, and not to create a perimeter, but to seek out the offender and eliminate the threat. That includes passing somebody on the ground that's, could be bleeding out. Problem is that the offender can shoot faster than we can treat and triage and get to a hospital. So that's the purpose behind there. Other schools besides the SRO, there's a number of community engagement matters, so we try to get to every school on a random basis for different things besides just security checks as much as just to get to know the kids and such. We'll talk about a tale of two cities. Parkland, Florida failed to act. There has been reports of twenty-seven to forty-five times that law enforcement in some sort or some manner were contacted by somebody. And we talk about see something, say something, hear an opportunity happen, and we failed to act. That's not a good thing. And a couple different, you know, I had the sheriff's office and the FBI both contacted. Second city is Darien, Illinois. I know we recall this from last school year. We had one contact, three different kids, so three different sources. Talked about a student that might do harm at the school. The offender was taken into custody and out of that, didn't have an opportunity to go to school because we were told in that evening. The school put out a warning. Other possible people that might have participated were investigated and cleared. Weapons were recovered. Person was put on home monitoring, all these different types of things, well before the next school day. With one phone call.
That's a great example.
You know, you can go on and on and on about the training. There's different acronyms, ALIS or Run, Hide, Fight. Run if you can, hide if you can't, fight if you must. Physical security, Mayor talked about it. Doors all being locked, trying to use one point of entry. Be nicer to have one point of entry, but a dual-locked system. So the person comes into the first locked vestibule, you can do your due diligence, making sure that the person's not harmed. Then the second lock to go in, because you unlock to come in to verify, and then you're, have already breached the interior. Metal detectors is an option that we haven't really talked about. The training for the officers. Try to train annually on officer or active assailant. The school is required to do one active assailant training a year and three evacuations a year for whatever purpose. Most of them are fire drills. Probably know them better as fire drills. I can go on and on, but you'll see it in a monthly report.
No, greatly appreciated. I know you're on top of it. One of the key items you mentioned is the training that is different, that's changed since Columbine, since other school incidents have happened, and that's all I just wanted to reassure the community, so, thank you.
And as Chief Thomas said, he will be including all of this information in his monthly report.
And more, yeah.
You made a point, Chief, about isolating that possible shooting situation. Humans, we are always, remember the bad stuff. We tend to forget about the good stuff, and, you know, I saw you nodding your head when you mentioned that, too, so.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other communications? Then let's move on to the Mayor's Report, and we're very happy to have Charles DeBath with us this evening to make a presentation of the Solsmart. Charles, would you like to come up and go to the microphone? And I think everything you need is right there.
Okay, perfect. So, thank you Mayor Weaver and Sylvia for inviting me tonight, I really appreciate it. So my name again is Charles DeBath. I'm from the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. We're a regional council of governments consisting of two-hundred-seventy-five members from around the region.
And remember now?
And, yes, Darien's Remember Now, which we're really excited about. And Solsmart was a really great project for us. So we started working on it in June of 2017 and finished in December of 2017. And Darien was one of our municipal members in our cohort, so they were one of twelve municipalities to be designated by Solsmart, which is a program that's run by the Solar Foundation. It's a national designation program that works with local governments and counties, municipalities and counties, to become more friendly to solar policies, so build in zoning and permitting policies that make solar easier to do in their communities. So, we were really happy to have Darien as a part of our cohort. They did amazing work. Thank you Sylvia and Dan, and especially to Steve Manning, who did a lot of the heavy lifting on doing the work that was needed in order to become designated. And so, something that's really exciting is that we had an event in February that was an announcement event for the fifteen municipalities and counties, so twelve municipalities, three counties, that were designated by the end of the six-month contract. And we now have the most designees of any, of any state in the country. So we're really excited about that here in Illinois, and we're looking to continue doing the good work of promoting solar policies in the region, so.
And Charles, we were the largest cohort in the nation, correct?
Yes, the largest cohort in the nation as well.
So Darien was part of the largest cohort in the nation to go in and get the Solsmart designation, so it's.
Cohort, when you say cohort.
That's the group, the group of municipalities, twelve municipalities.
All fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, and the three, or.
County?
Three counties, yeah. So it was the largest group to move through the program altogether. And, you know, there were, there were groups that were definitely smaller, that were working with us, that were working alongside us at the same time in different parts of the country. But we, we were definitely the largest, and we, we really valued taking the regional approach and working with that many units of local government at the same time to bring them through the program. And it was a really huge success for us and for all the local governments that were a part of it.
Excellent, excellent.
And it's really, I think that the, kind of the driver, especially in Illinois, is the passing of the Future Energy Jobs Act, or FISA, last year, last June. So now we're getting really close to Illinois Commerce Commission approval, I think, probably like any day, or, you know?
Yes, should be very soon.
For the incentives. So Illinois is going to be high, you know, public entities in Illinois are going to be highly incentivized to promote renewable and sustainable technologies like solar and wind power. And so, it was, I thought it was really important for Darien, you know, to be kind of on the, on the leading edge, especially in, in this area, to be kind of solar-ready when these incentives come out, so that if there are businesses, or even residences, or even, you know, community solar installations, that we have the zoning and everything in place in order to facilitate those programs and kind of be first in line for the, for the money.
Well, yeah, I, I think it's great, but I, I think we have a federal government or a president that doesn't agree with, is supporting coal.
Too, yeah, too late.
As opposed, so are we going to be running into loggerheads with our own federal government on, on pushing this and promoting this?
Yeah, sure, sure. Well, that's why I think it's so important for local governments and states to do everything that they can to push through policies and programs that support renewable energy. And so, you know, Solsmart is such a critical program in that respect that they're getting, you know, they're moving local governments to do as much as they can, even though, you know, we can't control what's happening on the national level necessarily. And so, having these measures in place, or these programs in place, to sort of counteract what's happening on the federal level is really critical.
Kind of like you said, having local control, and the incentives are being, you know, are being funded through the local utilities. So that money is not federally controlled. So it kind of takes over what the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, where we've gotten funding for street lighting before, now it's all going to be, all the incentives are going to come through the utilities directly through the Future Energy Jobs Act.
Interesting, very good.
Yeah, and actually, one thing I forgot to mention, so, Darien was designated Bronze, which is the lower level of designation, as a part of the Solsmart program. And recently, we've been working with Sylvia and Steve to move to a higher-level designation, and we just submitted new documentation to the Solar Foundation to move Darien up to the Silver Level designation, and.
Get a new plaque for that?
Yes, you should get a new plaque for that, yeah.
What's the highest level?
The highest is Gold.
Gold, gold.
So, yes, there's only a couple more steps if Darien wants to pursue that to move to Gold, but.
But we get to Silver, we just have Gold, so.
Yes. So we're really also very excited about that, and hopefully we should be hearing back any day from the Solar Foundation about that decision, so.
And to Dan, and to Dan's credit, and to Steve's credit, a lot of what was required to get to Bronze, I hate to say it, we already were doing, but we weren't really taking credit for it.
Yeah.
And so, I'm really happy that, you know, Dan and Brian obviously gave him the latitude to work on this, so really, really appreciate it. So I guess, gotta give it to the mayor.
Wait, where are we going to put this, this plaque?
I don't know, Wall of Fame somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, we want to, we want to, wow, look at it, it's a big one.
Well, it looks like a solar panel under there.
There's also a proclamation that was given by the Lieutenant Governor.
Yes.
At the.
At Argon.
Event that we had, so.
Okay, yeah. Look at that, all right. It is a beauty. It really is a beauty.
So wait, photo op. Get up there, Dan.
Okay, Charles, yeah, let's, that's right, you, you.
Yeah, come down.
Let's, yeah, let's do it. Sylvia, you've got to get the picture. We don't have Steve here.
I'll do it right here.
Okay.
I'll do a sun, a sun.
What, what, no. All right. Okay, Mr., yes.
You sure?
Let's, let's, let's do this.
Sure.
Or I'll hold a proclamation.
If you approve, it makes some pepper.
So I'll hide behind the proclamation.
I don't know how much it's going to make it go up, but it'll probably make it go up some. Very nice.
You've got to take a couple.
Hey, don't you want to get in this picture, like you did Saturday night?
Some facial recognition. Thank you, Charles, thank you very much. Thanks for coming on this wonderful.
Yeah, I know.
Do you have a lawn trip? Do you have a lawn trip?
No, it'd be too bad. Yeah, the topic was fire.
Thank you so much.
I'm not checking the. Sorry. Where can we put that?
Yeah, the GRC is on me.
Nice to put that somewhere prominent. Underneath the city of Darien?
Okay, we've got to find a place to put it.
Right underneath the city of Darien.
Some prominent place. Yeah, we need people to know that, that. We have very few homes, I, I think I, in, I think in your ward, yeah, we have some solar panels on roofs. I remember, and they've been there for a long time.
And I'll be, I'll be very consistent, don't want to be hodgepodge all over.
Yeah, and Schomburg, that was the, that's where the conversation started with Schomburg, because they ended up with a lot of hodgepodge before they started actually, you know, saying, wait a second, if this is coming, we need to be, you know, prepared from insulation perspective.
All righty, okay, so, that is, let's move to the City Clerk's Report.
I just have one item, Madam Mayor. A meet and greet will take place with Mayor Weaver on Monday, March nineteenth, at six p.m. at City Hall in the upstairs conference room.
Okay, City Administrator's Report?
No report, Mayor.
Pardon me?
No report.
Okay. And Department had information. Chief, I think you covered a lot already, but do you have some more to share?
Not this time.
Okay, Dan, anything?
No, I don't, Mayor.
Any questions for either the Chief or Dan? Then let's move to the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting Council's approval of warrant number seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, in the amount of two-hundred-ninety-seven thousand dollars, nine-hundred-seventy-six dollars and thirty-two cents from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended March first, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of two-hundred-eighty-four thousand, two-hundred-fifty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, for a total to be approved of five-hundred-eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-twenty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Marquez. There's that one item that, how does that affect the, the report?
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
No, it just has to be corrected and moved to the right.
Okay, we have to correct that one, that one item for Julie Senses, LMI GFOA dues, okay. Any other addition, or any other changes? Any other questions on the report? In the roll, please. Belzak.
Aye.
Marquez.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes, no absents. The report has been approved. Let's move to Standing Committee Reports. Alderman Marquez.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, the Municipal Services Committee approved the minutes of the January twenty-second, twenty-eighteen meeting, and submitted those. And the next meeting will take place on Monday, March twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen, six-thirty in the Council chambers.
Thank you. Police Committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next meeting of the Darien Police Committee will be Monday, March nineteenth, at six p.m. Pending agenda items in the police training, Department of Training Room across the parking lot, and also, we are a Downey member.
That's correct, and I hope to have a new person. I, I have to say that we put out a, was it Direct Connect?
Yes.
Yeah, a Direct Connect notice.
Yes, please, you know.
Yeah, about the, the opening for the position of all War Two Aldermen, and it was pretty overwhelming to me. We had nine people.
Oh.
Come forward. And so, now, I finally finished all the interviews for all those individuals, and now I just have to make a decision. I, I think I'm going to go back to interview a couple more, to re-interview, to, you know, discuss even more with them, and hope to have that, that appointment for the next City Council meeting.
Great, thank you.
So, and I guess the beauty of it, of it is, has been, is meeting so many people that, yeah, that wanted to get involved. A number of them just wanted to be, you know, a placeholder until they weren't really intent on, on running for the position when it comes up in April. But I was just pleased with meeting a terrific, a lot of terrific people, so, very, very rewarding. Let's move on to, oh, we, we have one more committee, Administrative Finance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The minutes from the November sixth Admin Finance Meeting were approved at tonight's Admin Finance Meeting and submitted to the Clerk's Office, and our next Admin Finance Meeting will be held on Monday, April second, twenty-eighteen, at six p.m. in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. Let's move to questions, comments, agenda-related. Do any of the Aldermen have questions or comments on any of the items? And let's move, there's no one in the audience to ask a question, so we'll move right on. And there is no old business, so I'll move right to the consent agenda. We did remove item E this evening and put, and moved it to new business, so I will read all of the other items, A through L, that are on the consent agenda. The first item is a motion to grant a waiver of the Raffel License Bond for Our Lady of Peace School Association. The next one is to grant a waiver of the Raffel License Bond for Signature Events Designs on behalf of the Community House. And the next item is to grant, a motion to grant a waiver of the Raffel License Bond for Darien District Sixty-One Educational Foundation. The next item is a motion to grant a waiver of the Raffel License Bond for the Darien Rotary Club. The next item is a motion granting a waiver of the fifty-dollar-a-day fee for the Class J Temporary Liquor License for Our Lady of Peace Home and School Association. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute a contract for the two thousand and eighteen Landscape Maintenance Services within the Seventy-Fifth Street Rights of Way at the Clock Tower and the Entranceway signs between the City of Darien and Eternally Green Lawn Care in an amount not to exceed six thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. The next item is, is in another motion, along with the Eternally Green Lawn Care, is a contingency of three thousand dollars for any replacement of plant materials that may be needed during this, during the season. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the Mayor and to execute a contract for the two thousand and eighteen Street Maintenance Project between the City of Darien and Schroeder Asphalt. And the following is, the base bid was one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and sixty cents. And there was an alternate bid that we are, we are recommending to be approved for sixty-one thousand, five-hundred dollars, for a total of one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, thirteen dollars and sixty cents. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution approving the two thousand and eighteen City of Darien Zoning Map, which had some modifications, changes, and additions. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance granting a minor amendment to our approved planned unit development in the Darien Town Center that we have with MVets Collection Center. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution in support of the Greenest Region Compact. And the next item is a motion to approve a resolution declaring the official intent to reimburse expenditures of the City of Darien in connection with the issuance of not to exceed a four-million-dollar General Obligation Bond, Series two thousand and eighteen, for the City of Darien. Those are the items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marquez, seconded by Alderman Kenny? The roll, please. Marquez.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes, no absent. All items have been approved. We move to new business. We're approved.
Tell Edith happy birthday.
All right, under new business, we have item A, approval of a resolution approving a transition agreement with Brian Vanna, and approving an employee leasing agreement with Gov. Temp USA LLC. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak, discussion? The roll, the roll, please. Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marquez.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Six ayes, no absent. The motion has been approved. The next item is a motion to approve a proposal from Spear Financial dated February sixth, two thousand and eighteen, for municipal advisory services for our General Obligation Water Bond, Series two thousand and eighteen. And the amount of the, of the, the service would be four thousand, five-hundred dollars, plus two-tenths of one percent of the municipal securities that are issued in excess of one million dollars. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak, discussion? Then the roll, please. Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Marquez.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Six ayes, no absent. The motion has been approved. The next item, item C, is a motion to approve a proposal from Ice Miller LLP, dated February sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, for bond counsel for our General Obligation Water The next item, item C, is a motion to approve a proposal from Ice Miller LLP, dated February sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, for bond counsel for our general obligation water bond, Series two thousand eighteen, in an amount of five thousand, nine hundred dollars. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman MacIver? Any discussion? Then the role, please? Marques?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Six ayes. The motion has been approved. The next item D is a motion to approve an expenditure in amount not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars, to obtain a bond rating from Moody's for our general obligation water bonds, Series two thousand eighteen. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower? Seconded by Alderman Belzak? Any discussion? The role, please? Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Six ayes. The motion has been approved. The next item is a motion, item E is a motion to approve an ordinance abating property taxes heretofore levied by ordinance number O dash twenty-eight dash twelve, in the amount of two, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is the, for the, the abatement for the, the payment of the, the bond.
In the waterfront.
In the waterfront.
The current bond.
The current, the current bond. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman MacIver? Any discussion? The role, please? Marques?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes. The motion has been approved. Item F is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Aqua Contractors, in an amount not to exceed one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for the replacement of the water main and restoration on Plainfield Road from Seventy-Fifth Street to Tennessee Avenue. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak, discussion? This is one of the projects that's going to be refunded by the general obligation bonds that we are floating. Then the role, please? Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Six ayes. The motion has been approved. Item G is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering, in an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars, for the construction observation for the replacement of the water main on Plainfield Road from Seventy-Fifth to Tennessee. Motion to approve? Alderman Marques? Seconded by Alderman Shower? Discussion? Then the role, please? Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Six ayes. Motion has been approved. The next item is, is item H. It is a motion to, let's see, motion to grant a waiver of the fifty-dollar-a-day fee for the Class J Temporary Liquor License for Maze Lake Knights of Columbus event. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower? Discussion? Alderman Kenny?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this item, as you know, was on the consent agenda. We moved it back down. Only reason I brought it down is because we, we're such a transparent community. Alderman Marques was, is a part of Knights Columbus. It was him who wrote the application out for the bond. So I just wanted to make sure it was on new business to give opportunity to possibly abstain on a vote.
This takes a simple majority, correct? Okay. Any other discussion? Then the role, please? Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Abstained.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Five ayes, one abstention. The motion has been approved. Let's move to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that this coming Sunday, March eleventh, the Darien Lions Club will be holding its annual pancake breakfast at Eisenhower Junior High. We open the doors about seven o'clock, we go till one. It's all-you-can-eat pancakes, eggs, sausage, orange juice, milk. There's a split-the-pot raffle that takes place, and it's usually an event that services about twelve-hundred to sixteen-hundred people. If you don't have tickets, I advise you to get them beforehand. At the door, there's six dollars. Pre-sales are five dollars per ticket. Children under, I think, five eat free.
I, one thing I noticed, the, the Boy Scouts usually had their pancake breakfast the week before you did. What happened?
Now, they're the week after.
They're gonna go the week after now.
Yeah, we, last year, we were having a hard time getting the dates, and we actually moved it to April. And this year, Mike Falco, who's ready to be event, secured the Eisenhower location early in March to beat the Boy Scouts.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean, oh, you're looking at it from a, from a monetary?
Well, the other thing is, they utilize our.
Equipment, yeah.
Equipment, so we're just gonna keep them all over there for them to use the following.
Okay.
Sunday, so.
Okay.
And I would advise, and, and I, I would advise this, and I think this weekend, no, was it this last weekend, was the, I take that back. Boy Scouts are the eleventh.
Eighteenth.
Yeah. But if you don't have tickets, contact the Lions Club member, and you can get it for five dollars a ticket.
Okay. All right. And just, I just want to say that I can't say enough about our, the, our Citizen of the Year event on Saturday. The committee, our Citizen of the Year committee did a great job, and the candidate, the, the citizen was, was a great choice, and it was, it was a great event. And if anybody's interested, the, the tape of the, of the event is on our Channel Six for residents to watch if they could not.
Will be, yeah.
Yeah.
We haven't looked it out yet, but we.
Well, what, yes, the, you have to get, video memories have to give you the, the video of it. Very good. Very, very enjoyable event. Let's see here, that is it, and do I, is there any other questions, comments, and announcements? Okay, then do I have a motion to approve, to approve? A motion to adjourn?
No. We're gonna budget. We're going to the budget now in the same meeting. That's how we listed it.
Okay, we're gonna keep it on.
Right.
All right, we're gonna, okay, so, the main body of our city council meeting is done, and we're gonna go right to budget? Okay.
Guys, we're gonna start with Municipal Services Water Fund Budget Summary. Brian, you got some stuff to pass out?
Well, yeah, you know what, I'm thinking, I'll pass it out afterwards, so it's not in everybody's way. And basically, it's a recap on all the changes that have been done to date, and the council members can take this with them, but we weren't gonna review it tonight, so I.
Okay.
Just, I'll keep it out of the way now.
Gotcha. Let me know when you guys all get to the Water Fund Budget Summary.
Page is that?
Okay, you're, 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 the water?
Page one-twenty-three.
What's that? Keep rolling.
Please.
Keep rolling. Okay, we, did we do the water depreciation fund?
Last week, yes.
Yeah, we did that last week, okay. Okay, we got that. What fund did you say?
Water, Water Fund Budget Summary.
Got it, okay.
Okay, we're gonna start with revenue and water sales. We budgeted under our water sales for F.Y.E. eighteen, seven million, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five. We actually came in a hundred and twenty-three thousand higher, at eight million, ninety-seven thousand and twenty-two dollars. Inspection, tap on permits, we were at ten thousand. We actually came in sixteen thousand dollars higher, at twenty-six thousand, six oh three. Other water sales, we budgeted revenue of thirty-five hundred. We came in about two thousand dollars less, at one thousand, six hundred and fifteen. Meter sales was budgeted at a thousand. We actually came in three thousand dollars higher, at four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Interest income, we budgeted two thousand dollars. We actually came in at three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars, so a little over eleven hundred dollars higher. So our total revenue for our Water Fund Budget was seven million, I'm sorry, we budgeted seven million, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, one sixty-five. We actually came in a hundred and forty-one thousand higher, at eight million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight sixty-four. Under operating expenditures, we budgeted seven million, thirty-four thousand, three sixty-one. We actually came in ninety-one thousand dollars less, at six million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, six twenty-nine. Our transfer to the water depreciation was six hundred and thirty thousand. We came in right at the nose on that one. And our total expenditures, we budgeted for F.Y.E. eighteen at seven million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, three sixty-one, but again, ninety-one thousand dollars less, at seven million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, six twenty-nine. Our fiscal year balance, we were estimating that we were gonna make three hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. We actually came in two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars higher, at five, I'm sorry, five hundred thou, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Our beginning, or I should say, our ending fund balance for F.Y.E. seventeen, we estimated to be seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four forty-five. We actually came in at a million, ninety-six thousand, four thirty-seven. So, at the, our ending cash balance, our F.Y.E. budget wa, for eighteen was a million, ninety-five thousand, two forty-nine. We actually came in at five hundred and sixty thousand higher, at one million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, six seventy-two. For F.Y., F.Y.E. nineteen, we're looking to approve a budget, including fiscal year balance of three hundred and eighty-one thousand, two thirty-eight, which would leave us an ending cash bal, ending cash balance of two million, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and ten. As we go out to twenty, we're gonna be looking at an estimate of a fiscal year balance of a three hundred and one thousand, nine seventy-five, and would leave us with an ending cash balance of two million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight eighty-five. And as we go out to F.Y.E. twenty-one, we're looking at a fiscal year balance of ninety thousand, nine hundred and ten, add to the two million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight eighty-five, would leave us at two million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven ninety-five. For the people at home and in the room, we always charge, or we've been charging, nine dollars and seventy-five cents per thousand gallons. For this F.Y.E. nineteen, we're gonna keep it at that rate. Let's go to page one-twenty-four. I think it's your guys' one-twenty-four, correct? Okay.
One-twenty-four, that's correct.
Under Municipal Services Water Fund Budget, under personnel, our salaries, we budgeted four hundred and fifty-three thousand, four oh one. We actually came in a thousand dollars higher, at four fifty-four, eight ninety-nine. Our overtime, we budgeted seventy-three thousand, five hundred, and we're coming in at seventy-five thousand, fifteen hundred dollars higher. So our subtotal for that section, we basically came in just, oh, slightly over, just less than about three thousand dollars higher. Under benefits, social security, we estimated thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. We came in two thousand dollars less, at thirty-two thousand, eight fifty-four. Medicare, we estimated eight thousand and twenty-four dollars. We came in about seven, seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-four, less than a thousand. I.M.R.F., we budgeted seventy-four thousand, two sixty-seven. We're actually gonna come in twelve thousand dollars less, at sixty-two thousand, one sixty-three. Under medical life insurance, we budgeted ninety-three thousand, four seventy-one. We're gonna be coming in seven thousand dollars less, at eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty. Sub-alone pension is flat, twenty-four hundred. So the subtotal for that section, we budgeted expenses of two hundred and twelve thousand, four seventy-three. We came in about twenty thousand dollars less, at one ninety-two, zero three one. Under operating liability insurance, we estimated two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and forty. We came in twenty-four thousand dollars less, at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine forty-two. Everything else seemed pretty flat in this section. We had a couple changes here and there, but as we go down to the subtotal debt section, we estimated our expenditures to be five hundred and fifty thou, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, five fifty-five. We came in at twenty-eight thousand dollars less, at five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, ninety-two dollars. Under contractual, to Page Water Commission, we estimated our water sales to be four million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. We actually came in forty-two thousand dollars less, at four million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. So our subtotal for that section is five million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, and thirty-three dollars. Again, forty-four thousand dollars less in that section. Our actual number was five million, seventy-one thousand, five eighty-two. As we go under capital, we're pretty much flat. We estimated our budget at seventy-four thousand. We came in at seventy-three. Transfer, under service charge, two hundred and fifty grand, that's exactly the same number we have. And under debt retirement, three hundred thousand and twenty-five dollars, exactly the number we came in at. Our total expenses, seven million, thirty-four thousand, three sixty-two is what we estimated, but again, ninety-one thousand dollars less, at six million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, six twenty-nine. Let's go to the next page. The big thing we're gonna start with is fifty, dash forty, dash ten. As you guys can see, we're looking at an expenditure of forty-five thousand. This is actually for hiring for a new person. Dan, you wanna take over on this?
Sure, no problem. I'm gonna read verbatim what we had put in the actual budget. This is something that Chris and I have been looking at for several years, so I'd like to start by, the departments workload and water system have grown over the past eleven years, and apartment, the department does struggle on preventive maintenance on the water system, as well as normal daily job functions. In two thousand nine, if you recall, the city took over what's referred to as the DuPage County Surf Water System, which added approximately a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and sixty-six fire hydrants, a hundred and seventy-two main line valves, seventeen hundred water services and connections, and also approximately sixteen miles of water main, while keeping the same amount of employees. The addition to the water system does require additional work for meter appointments, issues, especially with billing, restorations, water system maintenance, and one of our most mandating is that Julie locates an emergency maintenance. Julie, we are part of the Julie system, and we're required by law to mark out every single Julie that comes in. Currently, all departmental employees are involved in snow removal operations, and the additional, of one additional employee would give the department, the person to use in a truck, for example, during snowstorms. Water Department employees are often used to fill in and assist the street department with workloads such as brush pickup or certain drainage projects, for example. The extra person would also assist in putting together three full crews for our brush pickup versus the seasonal, which again, the seasonal, we're very limited to when they work, when they could work, and vacations, and so on and so forth. In addition to that, the additional employee would also afford the ability to multitask during emergency events, such as water leaks during snowstorm events, and we all know Murphy's Law, when we have those intense storm events, sure enough, we have several water main breaks, or a water ma, water main break during that type of snow event.
I'm sorry, Dan, are you saying we would discontinue the seasonal employees?
As far as the seasonal employee, we'll probably get rid of a couple of them. I mean, that's not a problem, but that'd be the extent of it. The seasonal employees, you know, some of them are here for twenty-five, thirty hours a week, some are here for forty, depending on vacations. Well, with the seasonal employees, we don't look at vacations. We can't have vacations with seasonal employees. In other words, our workload is our workload.
Well, we typically hired approximately ten seasonals.
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken, and just, I just thought I heard you state in your statement that we would no longer be doing that. I know I periodically get questions whether they're available. I just, from my own knowledge, just like to know if we're discontinuing that program, if we hire this additional employee, or.
No, we won't dis, discontinue it, you know, we'll still subsidize it with the seasonal employees, where, you know, it's possible. It's just.
We have not, our, our seasonal employee budget and plan has not changed.
No.
But yes. Okay, I, I thought I heard that he was discontinuing that. Sometimes we might refer to somebody as seasonal, Mike, which is a little different than summer. I don't know, Dan.
I refer to the summer, excuse me, I'm sorry, summer help is the seasonal, as far as I'm concerned.
Occasionally, you know, depending on if a, a summer, one of our summer employees maybe would go back late to college, we could keep them a little longer, but no, there's, there's no change to our plan for summer workers. I thought, I thought it indicated that there was. Okay.
Um, so the, you have the salary reflected here as forty-five thousand, but the backup material also indicates there's thirty-five thousand additional for that employee, and benefits, including social security, Medicare, I am, you know, and the rest. Is that part of, is that thirty-five thousand, part of this twenty-eight, five forty? And the difference is overtime, estimated overtime?
Yes, well, there, there's overtime, there's, there's uniforms, things like that, and I think that salary, at this point, we probably estimate it as, as a pretty good starting salary. But it, that would make up the balance of that number.
Okay.
And again, I know it's seven thousand, but there are other miscellaneous, probably the uniforms, somebody at the beginning, Dan, could that be a thousand?
Right at the beginning, I'll just get them all equipped with the right gear for the first time.
Yeah, that's a big, that's a big number, isn't it?
So the, the net impact is really, you know, when you think about the employees, more like eighty thousand?
That's correct. If you add up everything together for first year, yes.
Yes, that's... And then are they a union employee then? Is there like a specific?
There's a step schedule.
A step schedule, yes.
So it starts out at eighty and then ramps up from there?
One of our goals is to, you know, if this is approved, to have a person on, to look for a person with a Class C water, water operator's license.
So that, if they already have that, is it going to be forty-five thousand?
I think we, yes, provided we could find somebody.
But we do have the ability, if we find somebody with that kind of experience and we want to hire them, there is an opportunity to start them possibly, Dan, and I don't recall what this step is, but typically we've tried to hire at the beginning of the step, but if we do get somebody who wants to come here and they have some special certification, we do have flexibility. We have not started advertising or interviewing. So I'm not sure, Dan, if that's what you...
We could, I mean, but you know, depending on what, what person is hungry enough to come to Darian, and if he's had the opportunity to get his license, you know, maybe it might be travel, he's traveling too far for his current job, or, you know, but I feel confident that that forty-five thousand with a Class C operator's license is something that we can, you know, go for.
Anybody have any questions or issues with it?
This is one of these, I think, Dan has really tried, been trying to work in for a number of years, and I had never, you know, included it in there, but I knew that once we took over the...
Surf system?
Surf system, there would be a time, and, and, and Dan, water, the water system certainly, as you mentioned, it's more complicated. It's not easy to run. There certainly is a lot of maintenance that we have to do, and, and the criticalness of the water system, I think, you put all those together, and I would, I concur with Dan that it is time to add a staff member to that division.
Dan, what's the, so what's the average tenure of employees in that division?
In that division, you mean?
They stay with us.
Actually, we've been very, I think our, our track record has been very successful. As a matter of fact, one employee that left us came back. So I think, you know, just based on...
Most are probably eight years and up.
Minimum.
Some have probably been twenty.
At a minimal. We got guys that are twenty years, even more.
So what's the, I don't know, what's the average total cost per employee, like after an eight-year term? I'm just thinking long-term, you know?
Yeah, I...
Because it starts at eighty and it's going to go on.
Well, I can tell you, we have negotiations up because the contract ends in April, and I, I don't recall without looking at the union scale where those wages are. We have, we have three classifications for public works employees, and a certain amount could be worker one, two, or three. I could check it here while we're, if you want to know the top of the range. I just don't have that open, but it's on our website.
Okay, I'll take a look, and then...
I mean, I could check it now, so...
And I'm sorry, I missed how many, how many, for this particular department, how many employees are there currently?
I'd say there's seven. I'd have to go back and look at the counts. Hold on. Give me a second.
Dan, I'll just pull up here the, the detail of the backup of the budget here and...
I know I've got it sidelined on the budget as well.
Does the water department work three shifts, or are they on call at night when there's a break?
They're on call. It's a rotating call.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm showing five, not including the foreman. Yeah, five, the foreman and Chris. Chris is the superintendent. He watches all of that. So you have the, you have the five plus the, the foreman.
So Chris, Dennis Cable, and Dave Bell are in a part of the, I mean, Chris isn't part of the five, but is, are Dennis and Dave part of the five?
Dennis is, Dennis is, but not Dave.
Okay, so Chris and Dave are kind of...
We're talking water department?
Yeah.
Dave, Dave is... Dave is streets.
Yeah, okay.
Six, and, well, the mechanic, he just falls into it. Yeah, I, I see six.
Yeah, five plus the foreman, correct.
Yeah.
What is everybody's thoughts? Any, any questions on it?
Well, they've asked for it two times already.
Three times a charm?
Well, yeah, I know, I know.
All right. I have no issues with it. Anybody else?
It's a long-term commitment. I guess I'm looking that if we're adding a full-time employee, then, you know, I'd be interested in seeing other areas where that employee will fill, fill in for, you know, like, I think, to Mike's point, you know, temporary staff.
One of the, one of the things that, Dan, you've prided yourself on is cross-training all these guys on, on the different aspects of different things. And as we're going through some of the budget here today and seeing how you, you know, we've come under budget in a lot of different things, and I think, I think it all comes into play at the end of the day that this is a good investment based on those two items alone.
I would agree with that.
But it's a long-term investment in the pension fund. I mean, it's not just a, you know, kind of an expense for the year. It's a, it's, it's a long-term investment for the city, you know, over time, you know, it's...
And I agree, and the work a little older, you're going to keep on increasing, you know, as the system gets older, more maintenance will be required, whether it's Buffalo boxes, whether it's inline valves. You know, again, one of the prime examples is some of the valves we've been trying to replace for the last three years, four years. It, we have not been able to meet the goal of replacing all these valves in-house. So again, that's just a prime example of Buffalo boxes. To be able to go and inventory Buffalo boxes and put them on a, on a GIS system, you know, is, is something forthcoming too, especially when you're out there in the wintertime, or even in the fall, trying to look for some of these things. You can't locate them very easily, so it's time. Julie mandates a lot of time for us. I mean, especially in the summertime, spring, summertime, gardens, for example. We have to go out by law to make sure, and we have to put an okay on that site for a person to put in a garden, for example. Ten years ago, eight years ago, that probably wasn't practical. But by today's standards and all the stuff that's underground today, digging is more complicated. It just, it just keeps on evolving.
And to, to your credit, Dan, I think, you know, I think our city does, you know, operate very lean, and I know you wouldn't come to, you know, you're a resident and taxpayer as well, so I know you wouldn't be asking for it if you didn't feel it was...
No, I, I really wouldn't. And again, this is something that I see, and, you know, and we take into consideration, and we take for granted sometimes the vacation time, the illnesses that happen with the guys as well, and, you know, sure enough, that the jobs still need to get complete.
When you have a wa, two water main breaks at the same time, do you have enough people to cover? Do municipal services come over and help the water? You need three or four people each time you have a break, so if you only got six people, you got two breaks, you're going to need eight. You have two, three breaks sometimes at night, holiday?
Right, it does happen, especially with cold snaps. You know, again, it depends on the severity of one break. One break is taken care of for the other. Additional crews, we will have, but two crews sometimes working the breaks, yes.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
I just pulled up the contract. Is anybody, do you want the numbers, or you want to just look?
Yeah, I was just kind of curious, because like I said, it's...
The GU three, which is the, the loss in the pay scales, has a starting range, forty thousand, seven forty-nine, up to sixty-one, five. A GU two is forty-six thousand, seven hundred, up to seventy thousand, six hundred. A GU one starts at fifty and goes up to seventy-five, one forty-six.
And that's salary only?
That's just the wage, salary, correct. Does not include the benefits.
I think I did the math, and it's about, with benefits, about what, and overtime is about a hundred and twenty-five or something like that for...
Well, I think, you know, we're, we're saying it's forty-five, and at least the, the Medicare, Social Security, those things, medical insurance, that comes, comes up to another twenty-eight, five, which is what we're showing at least in this first year.
Okay, those, that was my question, sorry.
Okay, let's go with it then. All right. Let's go to the next page, everybody. Looking at fifty dash forty-two, twenty-three, fifty-three thousand. If I take a look at the Public Works shop coil and two AC unit, five thousand. We already talked about this under streets from before, correct?
That is correct.
Same thing with the security cameras?
That is correct.
Public Works IT upgrades, and then Public Works building garage doors are on our side of the building.
Correct.
Okay, so the only thing I'm, the only question is, plant number three garage door redesigned for eleven grand?
Correct. One of the goals there is to be able to raise the garage door opening itself, the header. It's a brick, currently it's a brick, a brick building with a steel ledger in it, or a steel header. So basically, we're looking to gain an additional, I believe it's one foot or maybe close to two foot, to be able to store some of the larger, the trailer, for example. The water trailer was one of our goals, to put that in there.
You have to have eleven thousand dollars to redo, redesign that.
Yes, that's basically taking apart half a building and putting it back together.
Anybody have an issue with it?
So where, where is the equipment currently stored in? Just outside then, if, if, if you can't get it in currently?
Outside.
Outside. So we're still looking at new building features down the line? I'm just curious, putting, putting bad, good money after bad, just, just asking, you know, it's...
Again, is, is, is it, will that building still be utilized then, based on the space needs?
Probably.
I don't, you know, right now, I'm going to say yes, because there's a lot of equipment out there.
Okay, let's drop down to fifty dash forty-two, twenty-five. Under new mechanic AC recharge machine, half to streets, that was last week, correct?
That is correct.
Mechanic modus edg, half to streets, that was last week. Vehicle fluid storage and containment system, half to water for six K, that was last week as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then mechanic air compressor replacement, half to water for seventy-five hundred, that was also last week, correct?
Correct.
Those were all approved from before?
You know, I, I want, I want to ask a question. I, I noticed that when you handed out the, the updated pages, we, we discussed that tree outside of the police, police station across the street. What, it was removed, the, the brick wall that you wanted to put around that? What, yeah, what did we decide to do? We...
I removed any expense, which means we'll just leave it as it is.
Okay.
I didn't, we didn't add like the two thousand to get rid of it, so it's just, as of now, the tree will be as it is.
Okay, all right, just curious.
Hopefully it doesn't die this year.
Are you, are you putting a hex on it, or what? Okay, just to change the coffee.
Goes along with the long meetings.
Don't hold that on us now, okay? Cameras for the complex, too, so we got to point one at the tree now, it's the apartment one.
If it did, we saved ten thousand on the planner.
Okay, any questions on this page? Let's go to the next one. Fifty dash forty-two, sixty-nine, forty-eight hundred dollars for uniforms. That I'm assuming is, would be under for the new hire, correct?
No, it's the total.
Is that including everybody?
That is everybody.
Okay. Any, any issues with it?
No.
Okay. Let's go down to...
That's got to be for the new hire, because we had thirty-three fifty in there last year, and we have forty-eight hundred for this.
That's what we said, yeah.
Well, I thought Dan said that's for everybody?
No, the thirty-three fifty, and then the forty-eight, right.
And the forty-eight hundred is for the new hire?
Correct, yes.
Forty-eight hundred, just for one person's uniforms?
No, thirty-three hundred for everybody, and then another fifteen.
Oh, the increase, goes to forty-eight, gotcha, thank you.
No.
No, I think that's an addition.
Because they're asking for forty-eight plus thirty-three.
Yeah, that's an addition.
Seventy-eight hundred?
Forty-eight for the new employee.
That's a lot of clothes.
Which sounds like more than he was saying before.
Is it Gucci?
I know, I know that his uniforms are not going to be forty-eight hundred, so I think... I think I told you, it was either one or the other, if I'm not mistaken.
I'll go with the thirty-three.
No, I mean, with the new employee, we'll go to discretionary if the new employee was approved, so we'll go to forty-eight hundred.
So is it forty-eight hundred for everybody?
Seven, yeah, it's about seven fifty per employee per the contract, but I'm not looking it up for uniforms.
Dan, what is the, what's that budget number? I'm sorry.
Budget number forty-two, sixty-nine.
Yeah, and in the budget, it's showing thirty-three fifty plus forty-eight hundred in discretionary. So if it should be...
Yeah, there's no total.
Should be forty-eight hundred total.
Right.
Then it should be fifty, fourteen hundred and fifty in the discretionary.
Correct.
Yeah.
We're all set with that?
Yeah.
So we're changing that number to thirteen fifty?
Fourteen, fourteen fifty.
Fourteen fifty. Okay, let's drop down to fifty dash forty-three.
I'm sorry, Dan, I was looking at my spreadsheet. That number that's forty-eight hun, forty-eight hundred should be four hundred and eighty. I think that's what, what it should be.
Okay, I really, I like that even better than the fourteen fifty.
You know, I'm looking at, the foreman is at four seventy-five, and we plugged in four, I think it should be four eighty, and then, because it's five hundred the subsequent years. But we will, we'll, we'll verify what that number is, but I think it might be that.
Well, if it's seven fifty per person and it's times six, that'd be forty-five hundred bucks for all six.
With the boots and et cetera, et cetera, just boots in there too, so whatever the, that's why, it's either one or the other, which is the forty-eight hundred. We'll double check that.
All right, we're going to double check that for later, no problem. All right, fifty dash forty-three, twenty-five, Water Atlas GIS mapping for fifty-five hundred. I'm assuming that for mapping of...
I'm sorry, yeah, that's...
Fifty dash forty-three, twenty-five.
Currently, as a matter of fact, Public Works discussed this earlier in the year. Part of it was to start identifying where the valves are. And as I mentioned earlier, one of the most difficult things is when valves get buried, whether it's by landscaping, you know, inadvertently through residents and or during the fall, and or during the snow. When these mainline valves do get buried, they're very difficult to find. As we discussed this at the Municipal Services Committee, our goal was to come back prior to the budget since we were under on that account and ask for the GIS mapping. Unfortunately, we were not able to complete the GIS mapping just due to the weather and with the equipment that's needed to be done. So what this will do is it'll give us the coordinates that will be able to be put into a computer software, in which case then the guys will be able to go out with a laptop or even a smartphone and say, okay, we're looking for the valve at, say it's number thirty-two valve, or the valve that's located at X, Y, Z house. It'll give us coordinates, which then we can measure off the curb and gutter, for example, or something that's permanently there. This will also be able to, in the future, work with Buffalo boxes or fire hydrants, so on and so forth.
How do we do it before?
Uh, it's called this, the guys refer, it's a metal detector. They refer to it as squeaky, and squeaky helps us identify it. Unfortunately, when it's frozen, yeah.
Very tech.
When things are frozen outside, when things are frozen outside, it gives us false, sometimes we get false reads. It could be a can, for example. And here we are, you know, digging in somebody's front yard, and we find a can, and not what we're looking for, so that's just...
What's the life on something like this?
It's indefinite. It'll be always in...
Bad in the record, indefinite.
Yep. It's going to be, it'll be, as long as the satellite is in space, we're in good shape. How's that sound?
Any questions? Anybody? Any issues? Okay. Go to the next page.
Our water commission is bumped up a bit, huh?
Well, the, you know, in the, the draft budget, I had the old number, and subsequent, we have the new number from the water commission.
Okay.
So the next year for the DuPage Water Commission will actually go up to estimated five million, oh twenty, oh thirty-three.
We should change this number?
Well, I'll change it again, but in the final draft, but that will be the number, you know, I'll hand out something like, in the water department, like I'll hand out later showing the changes. But that will be one of the changes.
What was it, what's it going to go up to?
It's going to go, the new number would be of five million, twenty thousand, thirty-three dollars.
So instead of an eighty-one thousand dollar increase, we're talking sixty-six on top of it?
Yeah.
So a hundred and forty, forty-seven.
The rate, the rate is four eighty-eight going to four ninety-four thousand. That's the increase. And then it, it'll get bumped in the, the following two years also, and I'll have that number.
But it shouldn't change our rate for this year, then?
It shouldn't change what?
Or nine seventy-five or anything like that. Nothing's going to...
No, I, no, I, there's nothing, the water rate is projected to stay, stay the same.
Has there been any discussion from City of Chicago in terms of raising what they send to DuPage, because then they increase for us?
Well, that's taking into account any, any...
What's already been...
It's taking into account their agreement with Chicago.
Yeah, it's already, I think all those numbers were locked in already.
Yeah, but I think their last increase was a year or two ago.
Period where, where that comes to an end, but I know the water commission just very recently sent us the budget, and they factor all of those in. But I don't know what the agreement is offhand.
And they have to report, the City of Chicago has to report to us every year how they're using our money.
We promise.
All right. Let's go to fifty dash forty-eight, fifteen, under equipment. Touch-up epoxy flooring at Public Works, half to streets, twenty-five hundred dollars. Should we talk about this before?
Yes.
Okay, so no issues with that. Planner and broom attached for skid steer, half to streets, remember that, for eleven thousand?
Actually, that was clarified. It should be ten thousand per count. If you recall, there was a little bit of confusion on the backup that we originally had. So that was going to ten thousand for Public Works, streets, and ten thousand for water.
So eleven oh ten, okay. Palette forks for skid steer, half to streets, seven hundred and fifty. That was approved, correct?
Yes.
All right. All right. SE core, C two hundred leak noise correlators for twelve thousand, five hundred.
What this is, is currently we use a company by name of ATS to find leak, leaks. These types of leaks are identified during, probably best example I could put is a plainfield road. We'll have water that'll be coming out on both sides of plainfield road, not really knowing where the leak is. So typically, what we do is we call a company by name of ATS who comes out, and they have correlating equipment, leak deten, leak detection equipment, and they're able to find the leak for us. This is not to say that there still won't be some instances where we could use the professional service of ATS, but this is an opportunity for us, especially with our current water loss, to be able to go out there and look for hydrant leaks, or look for suspect leaks. We probably average close to two calls per week at a minimal where residents think there may be a water main break. When in actuality, it's, it's a drainage from a sump pump or something, it's in stormwater, what it boils down to. I think this is, you know, the guys have looked into this equipment. They've demoed it with the representatives. So there is a good opportunity here for us to have some savings by not using ATS in the future, or reducing the cost of using ATS.
What was their cost to come out every time and...
It's approximately anywhere from seven hundred to fourteen hundred dollars per trip.
Dan, does the loss cost the city in terms of, you know, the water loss?
It's a wholesale cost that we lose, so the answer is yes.
So...
So the water, we, yeah, the, the water from the water commission is metered.
Yep.
For thousands, so every one that, every gallon that we don't bill for, we still pay for.
Currently, we're at about, it's a thirteen, thirteen percent loss.
Thirteen percent, that's a lot, yeah. Do, do, what's the cost on that? I mean, what's our loss cost?
I'd have to look it up. It's just a simple math.
Yeah, well, um...
Six fifty?
The way we budget, though, if, if we were to capture all of that, that would, that would change our rate. So, you know, we're, we're still, we're paying for that, but if we capture all of that, that would have an effect on the rate. So when we say we're, what are we losing in revenue, it's not, we're not really losing it in revenue.
Right.
We're losing it in cost.
And the wholesale cost.
Well, but that's passed along, what he's saying is that's passed along to the customer, so it's absorbed in terms of our nine seventy-five.
Well, think about, what would happen if, remember that hydrant leak we had out in the forest? It would cost us, what, a hundred and eighty thousand? Was that five years ago?
The one that they found, they found over near our gun.
Right.
That was expensive.
Yeah.
Well, that was real expensive.
So, yeah, finding those obviously then directly benefits, though.
Dan, I think we've had this discussion before, I think we've come down to thirteen percent from a much higher number before.
Actually, well, we did come down, based on the EPA, they changed the formula around. We were at four percent originally, now with the new calculations and certain things, the main thing that you can't use is the water loss on old water mains. Old water, older water mains were known to have high pressure, low pressure leaks, for example. So that is not used in a calculation anymore. That's the primary reason. So in meters, again, you know, it's, the meters we've seen, they're still working, we're not sure that that's all the loss that's equated to that. So this is a great opportunity for us to start looking at things on, you know, quarterly basis, let's say.
And at seven hundred dollars each time to come out twice a week, you're at seventy-two thousand eight hundred last year, so.
Right, I mean, that's-
It's a lot less, so.
Yeah, we budget, I think, fourteen five, well, it's in here somewhere, fourteen five alone for the water, water leak.
So now we can cut that?
I can't, I just said, I'd love to tell you yes, I wanna see what, you know, opportunities there are.
And do it, Dan, just say yes.
So I tell you, nobody's got an issue with this?
No, it's gonna save us money.
De-icing line thaw unit for two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
This is, well, obviously with the cold snaps that we get, we always seem to have a handful of water services that freeze. What this is, is it's a device that you could actually insert into the water service line and it will defrost it. That's as simple as it gets.
Necessity?
I'd say so, yeah, with, you know, I could relate to one example, a couple of years ago at Brookhaven, when his water service, Dan's, the hairdresser, the phone-
Minor.
Yes, thank you, his water service was frozen, so that would have been a prime opportunity, that's just the one I could think of. A couple of years ago, we had a couple this year, and the method, the methodology they use, we don't do this, is you put an arc welder on a pipe and you basically turn the heat up on it, if you wanna say, so, not a preferred method, method, nor do we use that method.
If the pipes that freeze down, we're fixing them, do we go back and re-insulate them, dig them deeper, or actually fix the root cause, or is it just?
Depends what the problem is. Yeah, we will do that, yes, I think it's, it all depends on the type of, where the winds are coming from, why did the frost get down there far, so on and so forth.
Well, let's not use arc welders, so let's move on. All right. Twenty-four foot landscape trailer that was approved last week, half to streets, updated water atlas with GPS coordinates, S.
How does this differ from the fifty-five hundred we talked about previously, Dan?
Need to double check, so I'm gonna make sure I ain't confused the two.
What about squeaky?
Squeaky is squeaky, he's staying in you.
Now that we know the technical term.
He's being replaced.
Are you, are you asking about this as opposed to the GIS mapping?
Right, in the forty-three twenty-five, yeah.
That's the new one, bud.
What, what is the difference?
I got that one, the other one, the other one you referred to. Okay, what's your column there?
Forty-three twenty-five.
This is actually to give, this is actually to give the raw data for the valve exercising program to Christopher Burke, so he can put all these locations on a map?
That was the, there was two parts to it, that's GIS mapping, I just wanna clarify one portion on the other one.
It is a bit confusing as to what, what did, well, why, why need both? It is cold down here. It is. And I've got a, I've got a warm jacket on. I, no, no.
You know, let's take that Water Atlas GIS mapping.
You wanna come back and check?
No, you know what, I know, let me just double check this, and I think I know exactly what this is, there's two parts to it. The fifty-five hundred in here, back on forty-three twenty-five, is part of our water main system atlas. That's an entire map of all our water mains on there.
Oh.
That's what that portion is.
Okay.
And so what'll happen is, our current atlas, while it needs some updates, is gonna have the opportunity also to be plugged into the GIS with the water mains, where the water mains themselves are located. Okay, so we basically take an overlay of the existing water main atlas map, plug that into whatever GIS people do, and that will give us coordinates of existing main. What that'll be used for is when utility companies call us and ask, okay, Nycor, for example, are doing a big project, Nycor will have the ability to take this GIS map of the water mains and overlay it onto their gas mains, for example, or proposed gas mains. Whereas this portion of it is what I had talked about before specifically in regards to the valves, the fire hydrants, and again, for the future for buffalo boxes.
That's, that's, when you were giving us the description on the GIS, it really was for this-
It was the, correct.
Really for this.
The both GIS, two different things, one's an update to the map, this one's the new program.
Is there licensing on this program that we gotta pay every year, or is this one time and we own it for the next fifty years, or are they charged like Microsoft or any other software, you have to give it update, pay them a service charge every time you go?
I don't know.
It's Burke software, right, Dan, or is it?
It's Burke software, but I'm not sure if once you have the GIS information that you have your coordinates and you don't pay a service unless you update something, the only time we're gonna be really updating them is when a new valve is put in, for example. Let me find, let me find that question out.
So it's like proprietary software that lives with Christopher Burke?
No, it'll get handed to us no matter what, whatever we, whatever agreements we have out there, we get the end result, the end product.
We get, we get the map.
The map is in electronic format, will be in electronic format. I presume that it's basically a disc that'll have the coordinates on there, you know, where we're not going to the satellite all the time, for example.
We never had that before, so this is brand new.
Right.
All right, so let's keep that in, if there's any issues, you'd let us know, right?
Yeah, I'll double check on the licensing.
That's the only question, if it's annual licensing.
Rigid press and snap drill for ten thousand five hundred. Rigid drill is a new and easier way of cutting copper pipe without having to score the pipe.
That's just another piece of equipment for the water department. And sometimes, a lot of the times, we run into situations where there will copper pipe, for example, underground, whether it's an inch and a half, one, three-quarter inch, or two-inch service, all depends, needs to be rerouted due to a sanitary sewer that's in the, that's in the way of storm sewer, or during a water main break, two of them were put together and they should be, have a minimal separation, so this is a tool that allows them to basically cut it, and it's with minimal space. So when you're in the hole, for example, that you don't have to have a large hole to be able to take the copper pipe, bend it all back, put it back onto what's referred to as the corporation, yeah, corporation for the water main.
We got any issue with it?
I'm just curious if one, one's gonna do the job.
It will, yeah.
And then finally on this section, two sheds for plant number four for storage for twenty K.
I have to laugh, what he wants to store in there.
I see that, too.
We bought Christmas decorations, we have to put them somewhere.
By the way, you have to get red bows to put on those, those rings.
And so we need three tough sheds, then, no, I'm just kidding. No, understood.
But tough sheds, not to cut you off, tough sheds, they, those are the, they-
They're pre-manufactured, you set them down, yeah.
Right.
But they last forever.
This goes on, this should go on the concrete pad that's west of that garage.
On Manny, right, where we have the fenced-in area on Manny Road.
Right.
Yes, I mean-
There's a concrete pad on the other side of that that people don't see.
The Lions Club never came through needing any space.
Well, it fell through the original Manny Road location we looked at.
We're running, they're running a storage facility over on Lamont Road.
Okay.
I'll rent you a shed.
Sure. Give us a cost, this is long-term, over how many years?
They'll have to drive up onto your backyard, backyard.
Well, does it matter that they're not gonna be heated, Joe's asking their question.
No, they won't be heated, but, yeah, no, they don't need to be heated.
Any issues with it? All right, guys, let's go, we got MFT and then Terra Hill, and they should probably be in about another fifteen minutes, so.
One quick question, Dan?
Yes.
On the water meters, I know it's, it's, it's in your budget, but the twenty-seven thousand, what was that maintenance request? Is that to buy new meters, or?
I'm going maintenance throughout the year, various meters, three-quarters, one-inch.
What's, which number are you referring to?
Um, it was back over on fifty-four, forty-eight eighty.
Well, the, that's, that's what we do every year, don't we?
Yeah, I just wasn't, I didn't know what it was for.
Okay. That's how many meters we try to replace every year.
The only thing that is new is we added a five thousand dollar miscellaneous under maintenance, not discretionary, correct? Five thousand dollars under that account, capital purchases, the forty-eight fifteen. But under maintenance, that, that's new this year, and that's not under discretionary.
Which account are you talking about?
Same account, forty-eight fifteen, the one we just went through, all those little pieces of equipment for. There's five thousand dollars under the maintenance that we did not have under the maintenance before.
That's new.
I'm sorry?
That's new, a new, new cost.
Is that the cost to put it up? No.
If it's something new, I just would expect it to be more under discretionary as opposed to maintenance.
Right under the shed.
I was gonna say, we all, I thought we always hit five.
Excuse me.
It just says miscellaneous, five thousand dollars.
Right.
The old miscellaneous, huh?
Yeah, remember, Dan?
Worse John Potter asking when we need them.
No.
Well, it's, it's, it's not maintenance, so it's new equipment that might come up through the years, it is nothing more than a contingency. So as Mike said, we, we could move that over to the discretionary as it should be.
Or delete it. It wasn't there before.
Huh. Interesting.
So are we keeping the twenty, or?
You mean the five?
You mean the five.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so why, I guess to Mike's point, why, why do we need it this year and we didn't have it before?
Is it just the fact that you're, you're just plugging in another contingency fund in another-
We don't have any-
I wonder if it's part of three-year.
In the general fund, we have ten thousand administrative, this is equipment and, you know, we, we, we're not gonna perfectly manage all the equipment that's gonna break, or we might need something new. And Dan, I just, I'm assuming at this point, this is for something new that comes up.
Right, 'cause I know for the three-year, I'm looking at the three-year right now, we've got fifty thousand for the following two years, again, following two years, basically for a three-year projection, not knowing what exactly we may need, so we left the five thousand as ten percent of that.
You added five thousand, you didn't want-
Yeah, to tell, yeah, you know, based on the three-year, was on the three-year, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, on your three-year, you have fifty thousand for the following-
I don't know, I'm worried about that, you're not asking for that one yet?
Oh, sorry.
But that's under purchases, not maintenance?
Equipment, under equipment, it's five thousand each year.
Five thousand.
I got fifty programmed for next two years.
And that's for maintenance?
Well, that's for equipment, again, would help not define it.
She's saying under the maintenance budget, you're saying maintenance versus discretionary, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, I thought you were referring to maintenance itself.
So it's, it's a contingency, not just miscellaneous?
At best, it would be a contingency is another way to put it, yes.
Miscellaneous contingency?
Just leave it at that.
Various.
Various, I was gonna say miscellaneous, various.
Sundry.
Again, if there's not, if there's no opportunity that we need anything, we will not pursue it, definitely not.
All right, let's go to Municipal Services Motor Fuel Tax Budget.
Okay.
All right, let me know when everybody's there?
Yeah.
Okay. MFT allotment, we budgeted five hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and two dollars, we came in thirteen thousand less at five hundred and fifty-two thousand one fifty, before I move on from everything else. That allotment, again, Brian, is based on our population?
Yeah, per capita? No, have they, are they cutting that number at all, I mean, is the state keeping or cutting our portion of it at all? I used to, I thought it, we used to get a bigger bump than that.
We, no, we used to get, we used to get a supplemental payment that was called the high-growth payment.
I got the old ones.
I don't know if it's ten thousand more a year.
It doesn't say, Sylvia, there's no, there's no number on it.
Yeah, this was, this was added in at the last-
Oh, last week?
Yeah.
That's for a four-year.
Which is fine.
It's been over for a couple of years. Oh, here it is.
No, that's place.
It should be ready before special service area number one.
It was its own, it was its own packet of information.
Yeah.
It was attached, we were supposed to discuss it, it had an agenda memo of February twenty-seventh on it? All right, the memo was February twenty-first.
It came under this, Sylvia.
Yeah, I know, I just, like, when I put him back together, I didn't put him, I think I stuck that in between.
Take your time, Sylvia, we have twelve seconds.
What? Otherwise I'll look over here. Go ahead, you can start going.
You sure? Okay.
I can share, I got it.
Thank you. And again, MFT allotment, actual for this year is five hundred and fifty-two thousand one fifty, and we estimate that to go out through FYE twenty-one. Interest income, flat at a thousand, so our total revenue, we're supposed to, we were expecting five hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and two dollars, we came in thirteen thousand dollars less at five hundred and fifty-three thousand one fifty. Under salaries, we budgeted two hundred and forty-five thousand, we came in at that number, benefits fifty-one thousand nine sixty-five, that's what we came in at. Road material, thirty-six thousand three hundred and fifty, came in at that number. Under salt, we estimated our budget to be two hundred and four thousand, we came in at twenty-four thousand dollars less at a hundred and eighty thousand for this year. If you take a look at FYE nineteen, we're expecting that to even drop down to a hundred and fifty-four thousand four seventy. Think that's a pretty solid number?
Yes.
Okay. As we go down to subtotal of this section, we budgeted five hundred and fifty-five thousand eight fifteen, came twenty-four thousand dollars less at five hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Under contractual payment striping, we budgeted fourteen thousand five hundred, we came in about, about fourteen hundred dollars less at thirteen thousand one forty-three. Consulting professional services, five thousand is what we budgeted, that's what we came in at. Subtotal of this section was budgeted nineteen thousand five hundred, came in fifteen hundred dollars less at eighteen thousand one forty-three. Our total expenditures, five hundred and seventy-five thousand three fifteen is what we budgeted, and we came in at five hundred and forty-nine thousand nine fifty-eight. Our budget for this year, we are expecting to be a negative eight thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars, but we actually came positive at three thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars for our fiscal year balance. Our beginning fund balance, we estimated to be two hundred and twenty thousand six hundred, however, our, it was actually higher at a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars higher to be exact, for three hundred and eighty-five thousand five sixty-seven. We take into account our fiscal year balance of three thousand plus our three hundred and eighty-five thousand six fifty-seven, where we're gonna be coming at an ending fund balance of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight forty-nine. For FYE nineteen, we're budgeting revenue of five hundred and fifty-three thousand, we're looking at expenses of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand with a fiscal year balance of twenty- For F Y E nineteen, we're budgeting revenue of five hundred and fifty-three thousand. We're looking at expenses of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand with a fiscal year balance of twenty-five thousand, six sixteen. Added with our three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, we'll have a year-end, uh, ending budget of four hundred and fourteen thousand, four sixty-four. So we go out to F Y E twenty. Expect a fiscal year balance of twenty-six thousand, which will put us at a positive four forty-one, ending F Y E twenty. At F Y E twenty-one, we're looking at a fiscal year balance of twenty-five thousand, six ninety-three, with our beginning fund balance of four forty-one. At the end of F Y E, um, twenty-one, we'll be at four hundred and sixty-six, seven ninety-eight. As you turn the page, you'll see that there is no discretionary items that we need to discuss. Does anybody want to discuss anything on those items?
The salaries. Remind me who salaries come out of the, this MFT fund?
It's a combination of public works, uh, actually, it's all public works.
We took our street department of salary, what it would be, and we're able to allocate X amount of dollars, uh, in general for that, so it's not a specific person. It's the total salary, um, and that's a way for us to help you some of the MFT money without a lot of the extra, uh, red tape that you might have to do with MFT projects.
Okay.
It's for limited tasks as well.
Pardon me?
It's for limited tasks as well, so they have to be MFT qualified.
And it's just streets, so now that we're adding the employee to water, would that allow us to bump this up, or no, since it's only coming from the street department?
No.
No, as Dan mentioned, you know, some, sometimes it's a struggle to get to this number. If we don't have a lot of snow plowing or different things. And Dan, I don't know if his, if IDOT got back to you yet on that additive we're using for the salt?
Still waiting for an answer on that. It's, I know, right, the rental, IDOT will pick up the rental costs of something, but not the purchase price.
Correct, but the, the actual material, so we're looking at that, 'cause that was something in the streets to, uh, budget. We're seeing if that can possibly be charged on MFT, but Dan hasn't heard back yet.
That was the twenty thou, last week, we approved the fifty thousand, thirty thousand for that new piece of equipment, and twenty thousand for the chemical additive. I asked if that could be moved here, since we get reimbursed, we can use this for salt. I didn't know if we could use it for that chemical as well.
Any other questions for MFT?
That would be important to find out.
Right, I'm waiting for that answer from our reps, our.
And, and, so, so it's, you, you're saying it's a percentage of, of the salaries we pay, uh, that you bump over here. Do you have the ability to take a certain number of employees and put, put their whole salaries into this?
No, no, we, we estimate based on, you know, really historical, so, uh, MFT is, is limited on what you can ex, use it for expense.
Right.
So if, if at the end of, uh, actually at the end of the year, on a recap, we have to make sure we've had enough to meet that amount, so we just can't add people or new salaries in there. We have to make sure that at the end of the year, it's been allocated properly based on what our real work activity has been.
Oh, all right.
Right, and we're doing that right now for the end of the year expenditure for IDOT, which, uh, ends April thirtieth, and then we're gonna be, uh, presented to city council next month, uh, with the new resolution for IDOT. So again, we try to quantify, we have to quantify and qualify all the, um, portions for grass mowing, for example, snow plowing, sign maintenance, so there's some things in our budget that are not IDOT, um, eligible for funding, period.
But with salary increases every year, 'cause the number's been the same from year to year, I would think just with salary increases, if you had people working the same hours, that we might be able to bump that number up a little bit.
But it's not, nothing drastic, you know, that's, yeah, we do.
Two, five thousand dollars or.
Right, and we, we try to do that.
Well, Dan, 'cause you will go, well, you'll go actually, actual salaries.
Go to actual versus what's budgeted? I'm saying the budgeted amount has been the same?
If, yeah, if we took the same numbers this year, Dan, and we had, but we had the same hours in two years and the salaries went up, you would include that in the actual resolution, but, you know, it's our best estimate now, we're give and take, so if it ends up a few thousand more and Dan could charge it, we'll move it over there.
Okay, anything else for MFT? Last section, special service area number one, which is Terra Hill. Property taxes, if you guys take a look at, we always budget five thousand dollars, okay, and that's what we take in, in revenue, uh, from Terra Hill. And for the people at Terra Hill, that's what we're looking to do for the next three years. Interest income for this year, we, uh, budgeted nothing. We actually came in at a hundred dollars. Our total revenue, we budgeted five thousand, we came in at fifty-one hundred. Under expenditures, professional services, we expected, uh, spend five thousand dollars. We didn't spend any, okay? General maintenance, five hundred dollars, which was flat. Maintenance was a thousand dollars, is what we budgeted, and that's what we came in at. Contingency, we budgeted three thousand. We actually came in fifteen hundred dollars less, um, to fifteen hundred. So our total expenditures, we were budgeting nine thousand, five hundred. We actually came in sixty-five hundred dollars less at three thousand. So briefly, we estimated that our beginning fund balance would be sixteen thousand, one seventy-eight. We were actually about twenty-four hundred dollars less. At thirteen thousand, eight eighty-eight is what we started with. However, we were expecting a negative forty-five hundred dollars, but because we didn't use the professional services of five thousand, we actually came in positive twenty-one hundred. So instead of having a shortage, or instead of having an ending fund balance at eleven thousand, six seventy-eight, even though we were thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, our fiscal year balance was positive twenty-one hundred. We were actually, uh, came in at fifteen thousand, nine eighty-eight versus eleven thousand, six seventy-eight. As we go out to F Y E nineteen, we're expecting a fiscal year balance of negative three thousand dollars, which would drop your fifteen thousand, nine eighty-eight down to twelve thousand, nine eighty-eight. So we go out to F Y E twenty, we're, uh, expecting a fiscal year balance of negative forty-four hundred, which would drop that down to eight thousand, five eighty-eight, uh, for F Y E twenty. And again, for F Y E twenty-one, we're expecting another negative forty-four hundred, which would drop our beginning fund balance at eighty-five eighty-eight down to four thousand, one eighty-eight for the F Y E twenty-one. The only thing we have under discretionary is five hundred dollars for maintenance, and there's no backup for that. I don't think anybody has an issue with that.
What's the professional services? Is that a burn each year, or what, what is the professional services that we are expending these dollars on each year?
For Terra Hill?
Yeah.
That's, uh, wetland management, there's three basins there. Of those three basins, they include several different factors. Number one is a burn for each one every third year.
Every third year?
Yes, and then there's also, uh, um, some herbiciding, um, and if there's any other additional removal and/or planting of evasive species and/or plantings, like I said.
There's, is that also part of the, were the?
The beavers, yeah, the beavers too.
They start to dam up the area.
It was a couple of years ago. You can't blame.
We saved the beavers.
Do not kill them.
We should tax that building. Any questions on that in any way, shape, or form? That's it for the budget, guys. Brian?
Yeah, I'll just hand this out. Again, all this is, is the recap, uh, on capital purchases in general.
The updates from the last.
I've got, I've got a packet already, uh, Brian. Yes, please. I already have, I already have it.
Yeah, no, I got it. They gave it to me directly.
Okay, and I forgot to bring this letter into the record, but I'll have to do it for next meeting.
Public hearing on the budget.
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing more to discuss on the, uh, the budget, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Alman MacIver, seconded by Alvin Marquez. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you.